Everybody, to the City of Celine Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, August 11th, 2021, will you join me in saying the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In attendance tonight is Chairperson Fosdick, Vice Chair Heft, Secretary-Treasurer Carroll, Mayor Morrow, Councilmember Girbaugh, Staff Rep— no, he's absent tonight, isn't he? And Commission members Beardsley, Troika, and Young. Also, we have Planner Atkins, Community Development Director Green, and Deputy Clerk Ritchie. There is a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
It has been moved, Morrow, seconded Heft. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. There's also a motion to approve the minutes for July 28th, 2021, as submitted.
So moved, second.
It has been moved, Heft, seconded Young, to approve the minutes for July 28th. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at any time and make comments under reasonable limits, which may be established by this public body. Person is requested but not required to state their name and address for the record. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person, and this citizen comment period is limited to a total of 45 minutes.
Okay.
Real quick, if I may, Mr. Chairman, just for the Recording Secretary's—well, this is a request of the Recording Secretary, rather—the verbiage in citizen comments can be modified. You don't need—we don't need to say "under reasonable limits," which may be established by this body, because in the subsequent sentence, you establish the reasonable limits, which are three minutes and 45 minutes in total. Just for the future, for the next meeting. I don't mean to be nitpicky, but—
Okay, public hearings. Twenty-one, twenty-one dash sixteen. There's an application from Danny Very of Blake Anthony Holmes, Inc., for the final site plan to construct the West Gate apartment buildings with forty-seven units, twenty-one parking spaces, located on a 6.4-acre lot at 7181 North Maple Road, Celine, Michigan, parcel numbers eighteen, twelve, thirty-one, two-ten, zero-one-five, and eighteen, twelve, thirty-one, ten, zero-one-nine. We have a report from Planner Atkins. Chris?
Pull it closer to you. Now it's off. You have to have the green light illuminated at the base.
I can talk better.
Yep, pull it close, though, Chris.
Okay, so I believe it was yesterday, we received comments, responses to the comments that we had in our review, and the applicant answered and explained everything that we had asked for, with exception to anything that had to do with engineering and emergency services. So at this point, we're satisfied with what's been submitted.
Sir, and I'll take it from here. As for OHM, that's the biggest report we spent the past three months on. OHM and Sally are satisfied with their plan going forward. As for staff, as Chris mentioned, they have addressed pretty much all of our concerns. Biggest concerns for you guys, the last meeting we had naturally was traffic. As you saw in your packet, they had an independent study by Row Engineering that covered that. As noted in that report, the traffic impact should be minimal. Also, in report that we added late was a report from Tedratac. This was something that was required via Eagle, or their state permits anyway, so we thought we'd just share that with you for your information. It should also have minimal impact on our water and sewer systems as well. So from staff's perspective, this is a pretty solid plan. So just recommend recommendations with Carlisle Warman Comment Nine, so including the design and the final site plan. Also, Attorney Forsey looked this over, and since counsel made this and designated this as a private road, and we will have city easements in this, he recommends the following language that was included in your updated memo to be included as a condition as well.
Any questions? Bill?
Question for either of you on the traffic study. I totally agree this project's going to have minimal impact on the overall traffic pattern of that area. It's just not big enough to worry about. But the study was conducted on April 1st. We all know that the biggest contributor to traffic in that area is the middle school, parents dropping off kids and picking up kids in the morning and the afternoon. And this traffic study was conducted when schools weren't full. It was the day before spring break started. So I'm just making an observation that maybe the adjustments that they made, which probably were more wholesale-oriented, might be a little light, because it may or may not have taken into account that the most significant contributor to that corridor is the school, which wasn't fully operating at that time. So if you have any concerns, or maybe best way to do it is ask if you would have any concerns about something like that.
I haven't had the opportunity to see the full impact study, but I can't disagree with what you say. Generally, the traffic impact studies are taken at the peak hours of the day, and I'm not certain of what the hours of the school operates, but generally, it's going to be before the eight o'clock rush and before the five o'clock rush traditionally. And that's—I think that that is going to be minimal in the overall scope of it. You know, it's something that could probably be observed for a couple of years, and—or not even a couple of years. I guess it depends on when school goes back into session, but—
Yeah, I don't think it should interfere with this evening's action.
No.
But Mr. Very might want to sort of consider that as—he looks at that study.
It's unforeseen circumstances. I mean, the traffic impact study over the past eighteen months anywhere is going to yield different results than what it would have—
Sure, sure. They did a good—they made adjustments. They increased it 120-some percent.
Okay.
So I think they had some good statistics to compare, but the school effect probably wasn't part of that adjustment, would be my guess.
Dean?
Just a question regarding the standing through, they designate more of the drinking water. Of course, this is going to be a dead end, and we've tried to avoid those dead ends, considering the higher elevation, which is the water line. Is there no way to loop this out back to the wood?
As right now, I'm talking with Jeff, it doesn't appear so. Naturally, the easiest way you think would be that else—that little L. And unfortunately, that's where the underground water tank—or underground retention tanks are going to be, so trying to fit a water line in there just isn't going to work.
Even when the tanks are designed to be connected to the road next to it?
I don't think next to it, potentially underneath of it or over it, depending how deep everything is, but then it becomes a maintenance issue after that.
I just think that's a good practice for us to do, and it should be something that should be required, but just an inspiration.
Dan?
Yeah, regarding the traffic, the one concern I had is that when you exit the property, about twenty feet to the north, the road widens to two lanes. You have a right turn lane. And if that twenty feet weren't there, I mean, if it was widened back to the exit of the apartments, it'd provide a little more egress for the people that live there and less traffic. Otherwise, everyone's trying to come out into a one-lane road. And I—I mean, I live near there, and at eight o'clock in the morning, it's—it's a zoo. So I just—I would just recommend you think about widening at just those twenty feet, I think would make a big difference.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to follow up, Mr. Green, on the point that Mayor Protem Girbaugh just addressed. And I'll preface by saying, obviously, what I'm suggesting is not going to in any way impact this project, but moving forward, I do think we should make contact with legal counsel and maybe evaluate it internally. But looping the water systems ought to be a requirement moving forward. Needless to say, we spent considerable time in recent years on the issue of water quality in—it's a simple dot connecting. There are areas of town that have poor water quality, and it's usually because the system is not looped. And so, moving forward, to ensure that our constituents have the best water quality possible, we should be requiring—that work to be done. So again, I think it requires some investigation internally. We probably want to talk to the attorney about how we would word or how we would phrase such a mandate, but I think it is something that should be explored, and I'd like to follow up on that point at a future meeting.
Go ahead.
With regard to that, the city will be responsible for maintaining that entire water system.
Correct, yep, these will be public utilities. Yep, water and sewer we are.
No more questions or concerns?
I'm moved to acknowledge receipt, Mr. Chairman, of the memos outlined in the motion.
Second. It's been moved, Morrow, seconded Heft, to acknowledge receipt of the reports dated July 23rd, 2021, from City Planner Atkins, report dated August 3rd, 2021, from OHM Advisors, and a memo dated August 11th, 2021, from Mr. Green. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Now, this is the time where the developer—Danny, you can give us a little rundown if you wish, and we may have questions for you, too.
My name is Danny Very.
Make sure the green light is illuminated, Danny.
Yep, there we go. My name's Danny Very. I'm with Blake Anthony Holmes. For the most part, you guys have hit all the main points of the project. I own Cascade Point over there at Celine Water Works and An Arbor Celine Road, and this project's going to be very similar to that in the fact that the two buildings, all the buildings on the north side of Claudine Court, and the one building closest to Maple Road, units five through 10, are all going to be the ranch-style product like I have at Cascade. And then the other three buildings are going to be three-bedroom units to try to get some families in there as well. They'll have basements on two of them. We've had great success with Cascade Point, and we've had a waiting list since day one there, and felt that the area could support another community similar to that, and that's why we're excited to get started here. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to the open meetings part of the project. There is a motion to open the public hearing.
I'm moved to open the public hearing at 7:13.
It's been moved, Morrow, seconded Heft, to open the public hearing. All those state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. All public comments are to be heard, three minutes per person. Look like it. It's been moved. There is a motion by Heft to close. Is there a second?
Second.
Second at Troika. So it's moved, Heft, seconded Troika, to close the public hearing. All those state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Ayes have it. Okay, we have a motion to approve, not approve, or approve with conditions.
If I may, real quick. I'm sorry if I missed something or if I'm being obtuse. Mr. Green, I believe you made reference to some additional or modified language. Is that enumerated in the motion in front of us?
In the—not on the agenda, it'd be on the memo that's highlighted, we got to yesterday. So it's Carlisle Warman Condition Number Nine, and the condition that a private road easement may be agreement that runs with the land and form approved by the city attorney to address the private road rights and responsibilities of the landowners relative to the access and maintenance be completed.
So that verbiage would—would follow the parcel numbers? I'm not going to read them in their totality.
Correct.
Okay.
It's been moved?
Yeah, I'll move that motion, move to approve with the amended motion that was just articulated by Assistant City Manager Green and is outlined in one of the staff memos.
Second. It's been moved, Brian, Mayor Morrow, seconded Heft, to approve as the language we stated. Any discussion? Brian?
Let me just say that I don't think I'm sharing anything that—that by any objective measure could be refuted. This parcel is currently non-contributing. In my judgment, it is unattractive. It has been on and off the market for sale for the better part of two decades, and developing it, developing it in a manner that is conducive with some of the adjacent parcels has been a key priority for me since I was elected mayor nine years ago. This is not a perfect solution, but there are no perfect solutions or perfect developments. But conversely, this is a very, very good proposal by a developer who's done quality work in the Celine community for many years. And as he indicated, what we're trying to do here is duplicate the success of Cascade Point, which has maintained a waitlist since its inception. I'll also note, for the public's benefit, that the developer has graciously agreed to allow the Historic Society to go through the home, document the building and the barn, and he's also graciously offered—I'm not sure this will work—but he's also graciously offered the Celine Fire Department to do a controlled burn onsite before the—well, simultaneous to the home being demoed. So again, I—as the mover of this motion, I enthusiastically support the proposal, urge my colleagues to vote in the affirmative, and am eager to see Mr. Very break ground and complete this project. Thank you very much.
Any more questions? Dean?
Unfortunately, it became emphasis more of the last minute, but I am concerned with the closed-ended water main, and unfortunately, I think that will be a detriment to me to bold no against this at this time, but we have in the past made that quite clear, and so we need to make sure in the future, any proposal that comes forward with us and that address—make sure it addresses that issue. It's just caused too many issues within the city in the last year and a half that we can't continue to approach this. I wish there was a way to perhaps put an easement or something across the other block of concrete that formerly was part of this development, but unfortunately, there appear that we can approach that at this time.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up on that, unless there is disagreement from the dais, I would like staff and legal counsel to move forward with drafting a formal policy to make that a requirement moving forward, and then bring it back for this commission to consider subsequent to going to city council. So unless there is objection from the dais, Mr. Green, please proceed.
All those in favor, go ahead.
I still have one more thing.
Go ahead.
So while I think that this is a nice—I don't know—it will look nicer than what is currently out there. I do agree with Commissioner Carroll about the right turn lane. I believe I voiced that during our initial review of the site plan. The other issue that I have with the parcel—and I know that this isn't your parcel, but there's no sidewalk connecting to anything other than the frontage of your property. If you're—you know, I know that it makes sense because we have people going to the middle school or things like that, but there's no access to that. If there's some way that the city could have a—you know, to have complete streets through there, to include a sidewalk on the medical campus, you know, I think that that would be a pretty good addition, just because there's no way, other than running across Maple now, for anybody who's going to be living in those homes. So those are my two concerns with this—with this project.
Questions?
Mr. Girbaugh?
Dean?
Just a statement, it may be pertinent to go back and look at the site plan for that medical campus. At times, we were, when we put in those site plans, if at the time sidewalk was to be required, they might need to put it in there, but also since we're going to be redoing this road in the fairly near future, we'll be including that, I suspect, as part of it.
All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you very much. Unfinished business. We're going to move on to twenty-one dash fifteen. Application from John Daniels of Chelsea Lumber Company for the final site plan to construct 58,525 square feet of imperilous surface, and three new storm-water retention ponds located on a seven-point, .38-acre lot at 600 East Michigan Ave, Celine, Michigan, parcel number eighteen, twelve, thirty-one, three ninety, zero one seven.
Mr. Chair, I am still recused.
Okay, thank you, Dan. There is no Mr. Green. I don't think there's any—
Dean, Mike has something to share.
Mike? Yep, okay. We'll wait a few minutes for Mike. Mike, it's all yours.
Thanks, sir. So based on the last meeting, you guys just wanted to formalize what Estella, the neighbor, and Chelsea Lumber agreed on for the fencing around her property. And your guys' site plan is this new fencing, where it includes the privacy fencing and the security fencing. They did also provide us the colored rendering that is on your guys' screen. We'll notice the red line will be the wooden six-foot-tall fence, and the green line that surrounds the rest of the property will be the security fence that I mentioned. But they made the changes based on the request, and this is where we're at.
Very good. Questions for Mike? There is a motion to acknowledge the receipt of his memo dated August 4th.
So moved, second.
It's been moved, Heft, seconded Young, to acknowledge the receipt. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
Abstained.
And one abstention. Okay, any comments from the developer, or do you want to say anything more, or we'll probably talk till we're—
I suppose you got any questions.
You guys have any questions for them? Okay. All right, there is a motion to approve, not approve, or approve with conditions. What's your pleasure?
I move to approve with condition is my recommendation to conditionally approve the final site plan dated August 2nd, 2021, with Carlisle Warman, recommendation number one, per Mike Green's memo dated August 4th.
I'll second that. It's been moved, Young, seconded Beardsley, to approve as stated.
With what?
With the one condition.
Second.
No, he—
We already got that. Any more discussion? In the hearing, none? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
Abstained.
One abstention. Thank you, Dan. Okay, very good. New business. Twenty-one eighteen. Application for a final site extension for the Animal Medical Center of Celine located at 7,300 North An Arbor Street, Celine, Michigan. Uh, let's see here, any—Mike?
Yeah, this one's pretty—yeah, this one's pretty straightforward. They're requesting, naturally, a final site plan extension, mainly due to COVID and the cost of everything. Naturally, staff doesn't see any reason not to, as it's an existing building right now, they haven't started construction or anything. They do naturally still have a tension to move forward on this project, but most likely wouldn't be until the spring or early summer of next year. That's why they're seeking that extension.
Any questions for Mike? Okay, there is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the memo dated August 5th, 2021, from Mr. Green to approve the final site plan extension for the Animal Medical Center.
Second.
Moved, Girbaugh, seconded Heft. Any more discussion? All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. There is a motion to excuse the absence of Chief Hart.
Moved, to excuse.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved, Morrow, seconded Heft, to excuse the absence of Chief Hart. All those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it.
Quick question. Is it—can I ask a discussion point?
Sure.
So this is two planning meetings in a row that we've had quite a bit of reading when we arrive. Is there any way that we can, like, pick, like, a pencils-down date, whether it be the Friday before the meeting, because I know getting copies and everything is an issue, but I personally can't come here, digest all of this information, and make a fully conscious decision with a lot of information that comes in the last minute. I don't know if anybody else has discussion on that, but I—as probably the newest plan—as the newest planning member, am having a little bit of an issue with it. So I just want to put that on the table.
It seems to have grown, I think, over the last few years, and I don't know if that's a matter of just trying to get product out of, you know, partners and things, and it comes out slower, but I agree with you. And if you're not up on your email, like, Wednesday afternoon, it can be a bit of a surprise. I sort of errantly accused them of a surprise two weeks ago, and in fact, it was sitting in my junk email box that I didn't know about, but I totally agree with you.
Go ahead.
Well, I think that this body should follow the example of city council, and it's actually in the city council guidelines dating back to 2002, and those guidelines have been revised numerous times subsequent to that, that the standard for staff should be that all of the support material, especially for enumerated action items, be disseminated to planning commissioners in writing or via email the week before the meeting. That should be the standard, that should be the goal, and if substantive material is provided at the eleventh hour, then it would be appropriate for planning commissioners to either table or postpone action until a subsequent meeting. So I think between the clerk—or deputy clerk and Mr. Green, I think—
I think we can strive to do a better job to make sure all the material is provided in the packet the week before the meeting. If things come at the 11th hour, please do not hesitate to state publicly that you're not comfortable making a decision. It would be perfectly appropriate to postpone until a subsequent meeting.
I would absolutely agree with him. Just from staff's perspective, last thing I want to do is hold on to information for you guys. So normally, it's as soon as we get it, we try to get it to you, especially if it's after packets. But we'll always try to get stuff to you when packets are happening. But yeah, the last thing I want to do is hold information back from you guys and then have a developer come in here and say something that you guys have no idea what they're talking about.
Sure.
My concern going along with the initial comment was that at some point, we make an incorrect decision because something came to us too late. And like Mr. Berry just said, the fact that it's in our email box because we didn't go to it at the last minute. And I think with the legality of the types of things we do, we need to be very, very conscious of that. I'm going back to my teaching days, and Scott can, Dean can attest to it, and Brian, sorry. You know, it's due when you walk in the class, and that's it. And I just need to stress my personal concern that that's when I would like to have it.
Yeah, and I think, Mike, you could probably help us out. If it really is a lot of material and it's just, you may want to coach us and tell us, okay, you may want to table this.
Well, and I think.
And I get it. I mean, I know there's product out there that wants to be moved and get going. I get some of that.
And I think there's also, I think it's also imperative to message to our petitioners and applicants to say, if you submit material at the 11th hour, be advised that planning commission might not be comfortable taking action, and it might be delayed two weeks or a month until they meet again. So I think it's a combination of getting information to this group on time, but also notifying our petitioners or applicants that doing so might jeopardize approval.
Dean?
I completely agree with my colleagues because I brought this up before, and I think this is accessed too and a number of others in the past. My biggest concern in this situation was that we had a public hearing also, and if that information isn't available for the public to preview, we are really pushing the edge on that. So my expectation would be that if there's a public hearing involved and that documentation is not available at the time of the meeting, it must be postponed.
Just for public record, all the support material was already put on minutes on demand, correct?
Yeah, every time there's an addition, a new link's created and everything needs to be posted.
And we're supposed, I mean, we have a, it's updated. It's not necessarily told to the public that we've changed or updated those minutes. And that's the thing that throws me off, is somebody may be unaware that that was updated and changed and doesn't give us an excuse to be able to bring something in at the last minute. Not, no, not to discourage you, it's just, I believe that has always been an issue and a concern, and we should be following a better approach to make sure that we just, as a membership here, can make the right decisions.
Katrina.
The Tetra Tech memo, not Tetra Tech, the memo on the water was, should have been. I wasn't aware of that. That would be a big difference. I would have been willing to have that proposed, and then we would have passed additional site control.
Katrina, next time you or Mike send a communique to the planning commission, can you provide the link of minutes on demand so that planning commissioners are familiar with that and can share it with members of the public?
The general minutes on demand link?
Well, the ones.
Or every time?
No, 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 just the general one. We don't need to send it out every time. But that is a great resource that I don't think people always take advantage of. And you can go and check the agenda and all the support material. And like Deputy Clerk Ritchie said, it's generally updated in real time.
I have one more thing, Mr. Chair. Mr. Girba had indicated that Maple Road is going to be upgraded or updated. And maybe you'll address the sidewalk at the medical center at that point. And it reminded me the fact that between Maple Cove and Maple Oaks is supposed to be a sidewalk. And my understanding is the city is the one that's got that in their queue. Is that also being deferred until Maple Road is updated? Or should we be asking when that might be happening?
Because Maple Road is what, two years?
I thought it was next year. I'd have to look at the CIP.
I believe it's next year when the eastbound's happening.
So these are things that we could address as part of that and even discussing the whole sidewalk in front of electronics.
Well, I don't want to belabor this point, but I think there's a broader issue here. And Dean and I have, Mayor Potem Girba and I have discussed this, which is making a concerted effort to eliminate the sidewalk deficiencies that exist in the community. And it's mainly approaching and trying to work with some of our older projects in town to make sure that in the ensuing years sidewalks or pathways are constructed. The most prominent, of course, being the property that's owned by Ford leased by Forcia. Now, when that was conceived in the 1960s, no one thought to put a sidewalk in there. And maybe that made sense, you know, 60 years ago. But today, it would be beneficial to have a sidewalk on that property since there are developments to the east and west of that. Same with Celine Electronics. So I think that's a discussion that council needs to have. But I think in the ensuing years, we have to have a, we have to commit more time and resources to ensuring that these gaps are corrected.
But an excellent time to do that would be as part of this Maple Road.
Definitely.
We have the authority to assess and do that as a council. So I think if you were really strong about that, I would support your recommendations to city council.
It was brought to me by a resident who witnessed a near accident by a boy on the sidewalk going north, and then the sidewalk stopped. And so he sort of took his bike into the roadway when he couldn't go any further, and that's why the question came up.
Yeah, and as you know, we've been trying to do a lot of that work with the sidewalks that's over there. And I think we have realized and have recently had to focus on that at this point to get that issue. And hopefully fill these gaps sooner than later.
Thank you. Thank you. Need a motion to adjourn at 7:33.
So move?
Second.
It's been moved, Girba, second and half, to adjourn at 7:33. All those in favor, state by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, ayes have it. Thank you very much. Oh, we need everybody to sign site plans out front, so please sign before you go.